Last year we came from two or three.
Yeah, exactly. It came from us. One of them in the email says, "Well, the state named us by accident." Two years ago, you guys have nothing to do. That's what I said. That was my recollection too.
Yeah, they just thought that...
They just didn't know where it came from.
We told the state they called us. We had to pay them back and we got rid of them. So, they never called. Pre-K.
So, make sure we're on that.
But it was an error on us.
On us, yeah, that's what I thought.
We put them in the back so they should miss them.
Are you, are you coming tomorrow? Manatee County, the parent university.
I'm going to United Way retreat.
Yeah, me and Worthen and I'll be there.
Okay, I'm going to call our meeting to order. It is February 25th, 2020, and it is 5:45. And I would just like to welcome everyone here. As Chair of the School Board, it is my privilege to welcome you to this meeting of the School Board of Manatee County. Your presence and participation are an essential element and valuable part of school board meetings, workshops, and public meetings. To assist the School Board in conducting the public's business in an orderly manner, we ask that you please adhere to the following school board meeting protocols. Please silence your cellphone and other electronic devices upon entering the School Board chamber. Please respect your fellow citizens and the School Board by keeping conversation to a quiet minimum during the meeting. Please note that the capacity for attendance at School Board meetings is limited to the 75 seats inside the Board Chamber. In addition, there is a section in the back right-hand corner for wheelchair access and medically necessitated standing. And please refrain from clapping, booing, or speaking out from the audience or engaging in any other behavior that is disruptive to the business at hand. And with that, I would like to ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And before I invite Mr. Barber up, I'd like to note that we have two Board members that are not able to be here in person, but they are going to call in via conference phone call. And I'm going to just check and see if they are on the phone now. Is Dr. Hopes there?
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right, so Dr. Hopes is on the phone, so he will be able to hear everything that's going on. And how about Reverend Golden? Reverend Golden, are you there yet? Okay, so hopefully he'll join us, and if he does, I'll acknowledge that. So with that, Mr. Barber, come on down and get us started. Looks like we have Lee Middle School Step Team.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Saunders.
Do y'all like to go ahead and come on up? Yeah, y'all can just come down here and line up.
Okay. In a sense, this is Lee Middle School Night. We have a couple of recognitions or reports and presentations from Lee Middle School tonight. And the first is a really unusual kind of thing to give before the School Board. I don't know if we've ever done it before. We haven't in my experience. But it's the Lee Middle School Step Team. And they represented Manatee County and the school district in a competition in Tampa where I understand they did an amazing job. And we wanted to bring them before you this evening. And to tell us a little bit more, I'm going to introduce Keenan Wooton. He's the Student Support Specialist and the Athletic Director at Lee Middle School. So, Keenan.
Right. Thank you. I bring greetings from elected Lee Middle School. Principal Scott Cooper, Assistant Principal Dr. Tamara Cornwell, Assistant Principal Terrence Marshall. Lee Middle School is a dynamic school where we have tons of diversity and wonderful programs going on daily. As Mr. Barber said, it's Lee Middle School Night. There's other groups here as well. But standing behind me is our Lee Middle School Step Team, which I am very proud to be a part of. I'm very proud to mentor them and advise them as they take on the world and reach their fullest potential. Today, I want to introduce our head coach, one of our coaches, Tamaya McLern. And she'll come down and say a few words. Another coach, Yvonda Home Shepherd. And Ariana Kelly. These wonderful ladies, they work every day, teaching our students steps. One thing about teaching, sometimes we burn that midnight oil and we're there at school long hours. And one thing I can tell you, when I'm leaving at 5:30, 6:00, 7:00, I can hear, I can hear them stomping away, practicing all night. But we're going to let Ms. McLern come in and just say a few words about our Step Team.
Good evening. You know, under the provision of Principal Cooper and then also with the assistance of Mr. Wooton, me, Tamaya McLern, I'm the science teacher at Lee, and Coach Yvonda Home Shepherd, and Coach Ariana Kelly, we have been able to pursue this whole idea of trying to teach the kids about something that culturally we did not see here within the county. And we wanted to bring it and allow a lot of other schools to kind of join in and allow us to all just have this family within a family through step, which is the rhythmic style movement that you use your body and other things with to present yourself in a performance style. So, we have been doing amazing these past three years that we've been here on Lee Middle School's campus with the Step Team. And we're just growing, and we're just honored to be here today.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So, at this time, I'm going to introduce our Step Team, the students that did make it here. As you know, we're in middle school and we get out a little later than everyone. I just want to throw that in. Okay, Celia Drummond. So, as I call your name, can you just please make your way? Enduro Drummond. Darci Dutein. Shanae French. Destiny Gaither. Charlisa McGee. Anyone else? Kanaya Jackson. And that is our Lee Middle School Step Team that are here right now. Give them a round of applause.
Keenan, I think we have some images from that competition. Can we just show? That's the poster for the competition. It was at Middleton High School in Tampa on January 11th, as you can see. Called the Stop Down.
Can we get a brief performance?
Can you do that? Do you need music for that?
No, we don't. We don't need that. Okay, can we come right here?
Another image from the, I think we might have one more. Okay, that's there.
Would you like, guys like to do a little something?
Mr. Kennedy's going to join you now.
Right after Mr. Mike.
That's what I was, we were. There's a camera right there, so we just thought.
Yeah. More room space in this way, too. And it's for us.
Get a little video.
Wow.
So, we can stand behind you. There you go.
Every evening, when I'm headed home, I hear those feet stomping.
Team members, can y'all move a little bit more to the center and then we'll get the coaches on the side, okay? So, team members, move over a little bit more this way. Keenan, will you move one down? Actually, I'm actually trying to work Keenan out of the shot. Ready? Here we go. One, two, three. Okay, and I got a little bit of the video. Do we have any parents here tonight? So, will you stand up or raise your hand? Hopefully posting the photo and that video, I hope, on our district's social media sites, Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, so hopefully you'll get to see it.
Thank you.
Put them on the spot, see if they perform.
They did great.
They did. Wonderful performance on the spur of the moment.
That is great.
We're going to give them just a moment. Do you guys want to leave now, or do you want to wait until after the other recognition? Okay, that's fine. These meetings can go kind of long sometimes. I'd like to invite Pat Barber up. This week, the 24th through the 28th happens to be Public Schools Week. And that's a week nationally where we celebrate the impact that public education has on our country, on our state, and on our county. And so, it's a significant thing for all of us here. And we have a proclamation. Here to accept the proclamation, we have the President of the Manatee Education Association, Pat Barber, and we're going to ask Pat to say a few words.
Good evening.
Good evening, Pat. Good evening.
This week, we celebrate our nation's public schools, our students, and the many professionals who work to help students achieve their greatest potential. A broad group of 10 million parents, educators, will mark the week with events and outreach to their communities. In Washington, DC, a bipartisan group of lawmakers will speak on the importance of a strong public education system as the bedrock of our democracy and for our country's future and economic strength. Florida's public schools serve about 2.8 million students and welcome every child regardless of ability, race, wealth, language, sexual orientation, country of origin, or needs. That's a lot of opportunity. In districts and schools throughout the state, magic happens in our classrooms every day. Our educators continually strive to offer new opportunities for learning and find new ways to connect with students. We shape our outreach to fit the children we teach. I want to thank you for joining with us in celebrating our public schools this week. It is up to us to make sure the achievements of our students and those who work in our schools are recognized, not just today, but every day. We have had tremendous support from our community here in Manatee County. And in order to continue to have that support, we must help them to see that our public schools...
Reverend Golden.
Which serves students in pre-K through post-secondary are the key to the quality of our community and the future success of our economy. Thank you again for your support of our public schools, our students, teachers, paras, and all employees dedicated to their success.
This is Reverend Golden.
Thank you. And I will read the proclamation in just a minute. I just want to acknowledge that Reverend Golden has phoned in now. So now, we have Dr. Hopes on one line, and we have Reverend Golden on another line. Reverend Golden, I'm about to read a proclamation for Public Schools Week. All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right.
That is just wonderful.
Okay. Whereas, "The week of February 24th through 28th, 2020 is set aside to recognize the importance of public schools in the United States of America, the state of Florida, and in Manatee County. And whereas, nine out of 10 students in the United States of America attend public schools, a total that exceeds more than 50.8 million children across the country and more than 50,000 students here in Manatee County. And whereas, public schools employ more than 3.2 million teachers across America and millions more administrators, principals, specialists, and support staff, which includes the more than 7,000 dedicated individuals employed by the school district of Manatee County. And whereas, public education in America opens its doors to all children. And whereas, public education is seen as a great equalizer in the history of America, which has developed, which has improved the lives of generations of people from all backgrounds and plays a vital role in providing the youth of this nation, the state of Florida, and Manatee County a pathway to a more meaningful and fulfilling life. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the School Board of Manatee County that the week of February 24th through 28th, 2020 shall be known, designated, and set aside as Public Schools Week, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 25th day of February 2020." Thank you.
Just so you know, tomorrow, we will be wearing red for public ed tomorrow all through our school system, so join in. Thank you.
Two colleagues.
I know, we do.
You're right, Mr. Barber. Okay. Let's move on to approval of the agenda, and then it'll be your turn. The Chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under the Agenda Amendments on the February 25th, 2020 Agenda, updated February 21st, 2020, and posted to the district website, manateeschools.net. Do I have a motion? Mr. Kennedy has motioned. Do I have a second?
I have a discussion to make. I'll make a second and then we have a discussion.
That's typically how it works. So, you have seconded?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Minor, you have a discussion that you'd like to bring up?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Originally, I had contemplated a motion to amend. I had drafted it. And it concerned the issue of these approving contracts that I had not seen, the public had not seen, and were scheduled for a meeting on Thursday. And my motion was directed to really require, you know, whatever it is, and we haven't seen it, that it be, that the contracts include specific provisions in there for efficient use of the public's money. And it's my understanding that in many ways, the proposed contracts by architect as well as construction follow along the lines of the Mona Jane Middle School, which I think is a good idea. But I think we can and should improve upon that in light of many things that we're more sensitive to now. And that includes climate change. And I hope that we have in the contracts that we at some point, even though it's not going to be, you know, this coming Thursday, you know, specific criteria about the energy usage. And there's an index for that. And also with respect to air tightness. And I don't think those factors were really put into the Mona Jane's contract, but it's critical that we have that if we're going to address, you know, climate change and get the best bang for the buck. Our friends up in Osceola have very specific and more strict than I would recommend here. But we need to have it in the contracts for the architect as well as the contractors. And the contracts themselves, you know, need to be reviewed, you know, to meet those specifications before this comes before the Board for approval. And the public needs to see that. So, along that line, there's the Director of Facilities in Osceola. You know, told me, he said, "This is really complex. I'm willing to come down to your community, you know, Monday morning. And if you want to have a workshop so that Board members, staff, the public, you know, can ask questions about, you know, some suggestions to make sure that you get the best bang for your buck in your contracts." And I said, "Well, I'll bring it up." And I guess I'm saying, I hope that we have a workshop, you know, Monday morning, you know, for maybe an hour, hour and a half. He's coming all the way down here, you know, right here for the public to come to to ask about, you know, how do we make the most efficient use of our money in this school that's coming up? So, I hope that can be put on the agenda for this coming Monday. So, thank you.
Okay, so it doesn't sound like you actually have a motion for this agenda, but those are maybe perhaps workshop items that are going to be later on in the agenda.
Yeah, I'll bring it up under workshop. And time is critical. We want to get these contracts finalized. We want them to be good contracts. We want to enter into the contracts informed, educated, and doing the best for our community and have the community the opportunity to ask questions and be informed as well. We're talking about millions of dollars. Just because we did something one way, you know, a few years ago, isn't an excuse to not improve upon it this time. And this is what the workshop's about. I praise us for moving ahead quickly, but let's not do it without taking into account what we really need to do in light of climate change. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I agree with you, and I think the Superintendent agreed. She and I kind of talked about it. And that's why we set a hard deadline. If the contracts weren't in our hands so that we could look at them and really fully absorb everything, then we weren't going to have that meeting on Thursday because that's just not fair to the public and it's not fair to the Board. And the contracts have not been given to us at this time, so that meeting will be canceled. We will still have the workshop on that day. As the other workshop item, I think we can talk about that when it gets to workshop item request. We can have that conversation. But do you have anything you'd like to amend the agenda now?
No. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, well, we've had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, with that, I would like to vote. All those in favor of the agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I think I heard two more ayes over there. I think I did hear two.
Yes.
So. With that, we will move on to...
Dr. Hopes is aye.
Aye, thank you. We will move on to reports and presentations. Mr. Barber, come on down.
This is another group from Lee Middle School, which we're happy to have tonight. I want to introduce to you Lee Middle School teacher, Starlo Galetta. I think most of y'all know her. She's been around quite a bit here in around Board meetings, and we always enjoy having her here. But tonight, she's going to share a special relationship that her and her, the students here, have with National Geographic. And before I turn it over to Starlo, I just want to let you know that she's had a longstanding special relationship with National Geographic. Her father, Jerry Shell, sitting right there, has every issue, in my understanding, of National Geographic from 1946 to today. And if you ask him about a specific country or part of the world, my understanding is he can go there and find that issue for you. So, it's a good resource for the school district. But anyway, I'd like to introduce Starlo, and she's going to tell us about Nat Geo.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Let me cue my technology here. It would have helped if I wore glasses. All right, this presentation is about the National Geographic Explorer Exchange for 2019 and 2020. And actually, some of my students are going to be sharing in this presentation. In September of this year, Lee Magnet Middle School was chosen as an Explorer Exchange classroom. We were only one of 22 schools in the world that was chosen for this honor by National Geographic to participate in this unique program. This program brings explorers in the field together with students in the classroom for a year-long collaborative project. Sydney, or Alex, a sixth-grade student, will be explaining the first part of the presentation.
We were paired with Kate McNally, an environmental anthropologist who is obtaining her doctorate at Yale University while studying fishing communities in Newfoundland and Shetland Islands. Kate is a visual artist who uses her artistry to tell the stories she has given by those who she speaks to. We decided early on that our project would be centered around conducting oral history interviews. We would put the content of those interviews into a performance for the community. Sometimes theater students memorize scripts. Sometimes they go to competitions, and sometimes they go back to where theater began, back to the stories that make us who we are. This is our story.
Next, I have Sydney. She is a seventh-grade student. And she will be explaining a little bit more of this project. The visuals that we are using is from a National Geographic resource that is free to teachers or to anyone else. It is a story map. And it is available for students and for teachers and for the community to map out the stories that they would like to tell.
After a few collaborative meetings, we decided to apply for funding from National Geographic for Kate to come visit us. While we waited to hear if we had received the funding, we learned how to write an ethical consent document so that we could conduct our interviews. We used the National Geographic framework and geo-inquiry process combined with state theater standards and ethical research practices to form the structure of our project. We document our work in our explorer notebooks as we collaborate with Kate and meet in small groups. We know that our work is important, and we are learning how to use our curiosity to explore our world.
Some of the places that National Geographic has been able to take us, along with this program, you're able to create maps and interactive maps. We have been to South Africa where we learned about the Hominoid N'addeli. And we were able to speak with environmental archaeologists and paleoanthropologists. They were an all-women team. You may remember in 2013 or so, there was this worldwide search for the smallest anthropologist and archaeologist in the world, preferably women because the body size and bones would be smaller. And they had to go into a 17-inch hole and go down to the extraction site. And they had to go into a 17-inch hole and go down to the extraction site. And we learned how they made that possible, which is why they were searching for smaller individuals. And it was very empowering to my students, because they could see that women can do just as much as any other gender. So the next place we went this year, we got to go to Mount Everest. A surprise journey in January. These are resources that teachers can sign up for. They're virtual field trips. My class, we would probably never get to Mount Everest together. I can't breathe that high up, just saying. But we were able to speak with filmmakers who are documenting a very historical and what National Geographic bills as their most important expedition yet. They put a climate change and weather station on the top of Mount Everest. And they sent a team there in order to gather data and bring that back to the rest of us. With Kate, we've been to the Shetland Islands, where we have learned the fishing stories and how seasick that she got, and that you eat a diet of saltine crackers. And even fishermen still get seasick. And then we also have learned about Newfoundland and the cod fishery status and how that has changed not only their environment, but their communities. The community she stayed in had 300 individuals. And after 10 years, there were only 100. She was the youngest person at 24. She was invited into the over-50 club to play cards once a week. But other than that, they are facing a lot of challenges, because as their population ages, it is not replaced with a younger population. She has also explained to us about Connecticut and Yale University. And we introduced her to our home, Bradenton, Florida. One of the important ways that our students are collaborating is through our Promethean board. I could not be any more grateful for having the latest technology in my classroom, not only so that I can be able to partner with National Geographic and other organizations, but that I'm able to bring these resources immediately to my students. The clip on the side is just a way that we can use the interactive whiteboard. And they were collaborating and recording into a Google document at the same time as they were using the geo-inquiry process. This process asks us to ask the question. We collect our data. We visualize what we would like to see. We create. And then we act on our issue that we have chosen. Students using globes that were, when Lee Middle School was built in 1999, 2000, before we opened, all classrooms were given globes. Most classrooms can use Google Earth now. But my students still enjoy the touching and feeling and seeing where they relate to the world. Also, students were able to use their real life, or use the skills they're learning in their classrooms for real-life applications. Kate was quite surprised when my students were able to look at this graph and tell her all of the information that she was requesting for them. This is enforcing not only their core classes, but their interaction with others in the community. And again, this is one of the fishermen that they enjoyed the fishing stories, because we don't get to hear a lot of those stories anymore. This is one of the fishermen in my classroom on the Promethean and Kate giving a lecture on the different ways to fish and how they are affected by climate change. There's some, I'm going to send this presentation to you. There are some quotes from the students. But one of them is that Lisette said in eighth grade, "When Kate came to visit us, she taught us what she does, where she has been, and showed us pictures of things she has experienced, which was very interesting. She taught us facts about animals and boats that we have never heard before." This is my, the eighth-grade students, the eighth-grade explorers, who are kind of leading the project. These students, some of them are here. They are intensely gazing at the filmmakers in Mount Everest. And as Mount Everest explorers were telling them how to tell a story. And those are those explorers. When you sign up for a virtual classroom as a teacher, you can ask if you can be online and be live. Otherwise, you can just be a member of the audience. There are several different, does he need assistance? Okay. There are several different topics from anything that you can think of, from science, language, arts, to theater, any background. If you go and look, there's an explorer probably in the field studying it. And teachers can bring these people into their classrooms without any cost or charge. And these, though we may not know their faces, you have seen their work, if you have seen any productions by National Geographic. These are the filmmakers that bring us that work. And so what is next for this project, before I bring Heidi, is that we are using the National Geographic framework to, they've chosen their theme. And some of the skills or some of the content areas for that framework is the skills that they are learning is observation, communication, collaboration, and problem solving. Their attitudes are curiosity, responsibility, and empowerment. And with knowledge, this is the framework they're using the most of for their interviews, is the human journey, our changing planet, and wildlife and wild places. Next is Heidi, and she is an eighth-grade theater student. And she's going to give an example of what her personal project is about.
In this project, I'll be discussing and asking questions about the environmental changes occurring around the planet. The planet has drastically changed over the course of billions of years with animal life and nature coming and going. Multiple events have caused the planet to change and transform. In the past years, human activities have thought to increase the risk of global warming and additional complications to climate change. Small bodies and objects in space have also affected the planet, along with animals and their natural instincts. We look around and see that everything is changing rapidly. Resources and other people have thought that climate change and global warming could possibly create calamities, such as health risks and intense weather events. A part of the world thinks that our ecosystems are at risk of floods, fires, and other extreme natural disasters. Part of the population sees that the planet has been changed due to these unfortunate events and are to explore the impact that the environmental changes has on us.
Thank you, Heidi. That's just an example of one of the projects. There's over 60 interviews being conducted. That's just an example of one. And maybe you will be asked to, to give an oral interview for their project. This project will keep going until May, where it will be published by National Geographic. And there's already small parts, our curriculum and the work in our deliverables are already being published as we speak, as we turn them in. Our next milestone is due March 31st. And we thank you for allowing us to come and share this important resource. I encourage all teachers, I'm a resource. If you would like to be interested in becoming a National Geographic certified educator, the benefits are immense. The cost is zero. And the effort put into it is probably what you're already doing into your classroom. You just need to record it. And these world, this world of information and resources will then begin open. And I close because lifelong learning has always been an essential part of Manatee County School District. And where my dad was telling me that he went to school on this property in 1954, in the old Jinger High. This is my dad giving some of his precious National Geographics to Kate as Kate completes her doctorate degree. And not only, we jumped to technology. My dad made it clear to her that she could get every episode on the online archive, or every issue on the online archive. However, seeing it and touching history is impactful. And seeing the, Kate was really impressed with the advertisements in National Geographic and how that was in the context of the articles that were being presented at the time. And so not only do I thank the board, most assuredly my students, but my father for making sure that I have a lifelong learning for learning, and it's very essential, and that my students are picking up that torch and carrying it forward. Thank you.
Get Dad up here. Come on, Dad. Dad.
Everybody, this is my daddy.
We have Mr. Cooper. Let's bring Mr. Cooper.
Yeah.
This has been the Lee Middle School showcase tonight. Mr. Cooper, the principal, needs to be in there.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to release them from duty.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. That's impressive.
Thank you. Can I move on to the approval of the minutes? Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I do. I recommend the approval of the minutes from February 7, 2020 workshop, and February the 11, 2020 regular meeting.
No move.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Okay, hearing none. Let's vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Please put...
Aye.
All right. I think both our friends are up there. Ari, thank you. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the consent agenda for February 25, 2020.
No move.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any public comment?
Consent number eight. Mr. Gribalina. Sure, it's number eight.
He said he, he said he's going to wait until public comment. Is there any other? Okay, is there any, oh, no, it's consent agenda, there is no discussion. Okay, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
All right. That was unanimous. There is no new business. And so with that, we will move on to public comment.
Mr. Gribalina, you are first up.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry. Yes, Reverend Golden.
How many public comments do we have?
There are 10 signed up.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Gribalina.
Is this where I put my overhead information? So...
Can I ask him a question? Is this the one that you had the clip that you asked us to look? Because Ms. Boyce can pull that up for you.
Yeah, about 10 seconds. And I think Charlie, you made some copies, didn't you?
No, I forgot the copies.
So we can pull that up. We're ready to pull that up for you, sir.
Yes.
It had to go with his comment. We adieu'd it, so...
Okay.
Thanks for bailing me out.
Yes, that's it. Okay. All right, for the record, Glenn Gribalina. Now, do I have five minutes? Because you have mine in perpetuity for New Pierce. And I have another one today. Federation Manatee, 50-year-old business, 50-year-old organization. I'm vice president, been in it for several years. Signed by the chair and all the board members.
You're running public comment. It's up to you.
Glenn, you got five. Go for it.
Thank you. So the, there's legislation going through right now, power purchase agreement, which is going to really benefit the schools. So the schools won't have to put the outlay of the capital for solar arrays. So we're hoping that'll go through. And that will certainly help the school district in not, in not outlaying the cash. Typically, a private investor will come in, set up the solar farm, and they'll own it, and you'll buy from them, and everybody's happy. They'll take the tax credits. My only concern is that they only do large projects. So hopefully, that goes through. On the smaller projects, I would say that the school would need to step up to the plate as far as doing small demonstration projects. Eight, 10, 15 panels, a carport. I really don't care what it is, as long as the students see it, touch it, feel it, kick it, ask questions about it. Every, every school should have at least one solar panel, including this building. And every administration building and maintenance building should have at least some solar panel. So we need to move in that direction as well. Okay, cell phones, they're terrible. They're absolutely insane in our school system. And as a taxpayer, this is not the first time I've brought it up. But we're paying teachers a good salary to get 100% out of them. But when they're using 20% to babysit, unplug your phone. Put it away. Take it off the charger. It's dangerous. We're taking a test. I see it day in and day out. I think you really need to get down in the trenches and go to some of these schools and see what the problem is. And there's a, there's a measure of discipline and disrespect as well to the teachers, to the staff, when they have that cellphone in their hand. It's a terrible idea. Obviously, the parents don't have the discipline to send their kids to school without it, because they don't want the pushback. So all I'm asking is, take that under consideration. And I think one demonstration school is not too much to ask. They've got products out there. You slip them in the bag, you pick them up after school. I would like you to think about that. The other thing is workshops. You know, you have them during the day. And that doesn't help folks that are working. If you're going to do workshops, do them, do them in the day when you can get your staff in here. But you need to do it at night, so you can open it up to the citizens that pay your salaries to say, "Look, we know, we don't want you to take a day off to come down and work in the workshop." So you do a double workshop. That's at least what the citizens deserve. So I think, I think that, that needs consideration. And any really workshops, like the county, you go to a convention hall, you do it at 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock, and you get, you get people engaged. That's the only way you're going to get feedback and engagement from the public, is have the workshops during convenient times for the public, not convenient times for the school board. Homeless students, we still have between 800 and 2,000 homeless students. HART does a wonderful program. They provide food, uniforms, books, everything but a roof over their head. So when a student is deprived of sleep because they're homeless, their grades suffer. So I'm asking if you can do a, any type of stats on the homeless kids, their grades versus grades from a stable environment. And you'll be surprised. No, you won't. You'll, you'll know, you'll know the difference. So even though you think you're not in the housing business, you need to be in the housing business, particularly for our most vulnerable, which are the students. Which brings me back to affordable housing for the workforce, your, your own employees. You know, things are spiraling out of control. I don't see anything slowing up. We talked about the portables coming up. That's one option. But there should be a workshop on surplus property and property that goes unused that the school district owns. No, that, let me take that back. The, the school district manages it. The citizens own those buildings. The taxpayer owns those buildings. So I think, I think there's several avenues that need to be addressed. Appreciate that if you consider all of them. And thank you for the five minutes.
Mr. Nelson? Yeah, pass. Mr. Murphy?
Yes, good evening. I'm Stephen Murphy, and I'm the, I'm on the Board of Directors of the League of Women Voters. I chair their Natural Resources Committee. I also co-chair the Climate Reality Chapter for Manatee and Sarasota Counties, as well as being a member of the Manatee Clean Energy Alliance. And I want to address the board on the critical importance of the school board doing everything it can to focus on using renewable energy sources. As you look at remodeling or building new structures, it's critical that you look at an investment over the next 50 years. And solar energy, as someone who's put solar on my home, I know the costs have come down every year. Mine will pay for itself in six years. I know you don't get a tax credit, but you still have the same kind of payback options. It might take a little longer, but then your, your buildings will be around a lot longer than, than a, than a home. So it's really important that you do that, not only because it minimizes the amount of CO2 you put in the air, but it also saves you money. And if we don't begin to reduce our CO2, there's no amount of structures we can build to keep the sea from coming in. It will overwhelm us. In 20 years, the county of Manatee says our barrier islands will be in deep trouble. If we don't do anything, it'll happen even sooner. So I ask you, as you begin looking at things that have to be done, that you think about renewable energy sources. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Susan, are you here? Oh, there you are. I was looking at the team over this way. Come on up, you're next.
And John, come too?
Uh, sure. I mean, you're both signed up, so we'll give you six minutes if you need it for two of you.
I'll meet up.
Okay. Welcome. Gotcha. Sounds good.
Heat, storms, fires, floods. In Florida, those are the things that are increasing in frequency and severity due to global warming. And I think of global warming as the process and climate change. And I think of global warming as the process and climate change as the result. We must do everything we can to reverse global warming. That includes using clean energy rather than energy derived from fossil fuels and planting vegetation to move carbon from our atmosphere to our soil. New construction, as of schools, as in schools, should embody both those efforts. Solar panels with batteries for storage and a green campus should be no-brainers assuming that keeping life on the planet is our highest priority. Your students look to you for role models. Who look to you for role models are probably more aware of these things than you know. The times there are changing rapidly. It took poet Bob Dylan a few decades to get his Nobel Prize. Greta Thunberg will have hers probably before she receives her high school diploma. I'm carrying a pass from the time of the first Earth Day. It's normally pinned to the wall of my home office. It says, "If you are not part of the solution, you are part of the problem." I'm John Deravec from East County, I didn't identify myself, I'm sorry.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. My name is Susan Deravec. I'm a retired teacher from Manatee County. I spent twenty-two years teaching in middle schools here, starting at the old Bradenton Middle School and ending at the renovated Martha B. King Middle School. And when I consider summer sessions, too, I've taught in seven different middle schools here. But both retired, my husband John and I now spend a lot of time discussing climate change with our national legislators. We are part of a huge international volunteer nonprofit organization called Citizens Climate Lobby. And we lead the local group of more than four hundred members. We help legislators, especially Representative Vern Buchanan, stay informed of possible climate bills and their details. Right now, there are several bills in Congress which would raise the cost of fossil fuels because they are responsible for much of our global warming. And the point of these bills is to give people across America the incentive to switch to using renewable sources of energy, such as solar panels. But you don't have to wait until a bill coerces you into making the switch to renewables. At our own house, we made the decision to install solar panels a couple of years ago, mostly because it's important to lower our own carbon footprint. But it also makes economic sense. Right now, our power bills are nearly the minimum possible. My point is, I'd like to see you all look seriously at the possibility of installing solar panels as new schools are built and as old ones are retrofitted. And when you do the economic math, look ahead to what the future may hold. Thank you.
Jim Mullard.
Mr. Mullard, come on down. Thank you, Jim.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to comment. You've seen me here before. I'm the spokesperson for the Manatee Clean Energy Alliance. A group of citizens who are concerned about the effects of climate change on our community. And I'm also here to support solar energy for the new SUG Middle School, which is soon slated to be constructed. There are many opportunities for us to implement clean energy. And there are many reasons why it's so important to reduce our fossil fuel emissions. I want to give you three examples. The first one relates to a group, a consulting group called 427, who gave this report about a year ago relative to the economic impact of climate change in our county. And of the three thousand one hundred and forty-seven counties that they studied in the United States, they put Manatee County as number one at risk, economic risk due to climate change. Secondly, Ann Marie Island just recently held a seminar for their residents, about six, seven hundred of their residents. Heard John Englander, who's a noted authority on sea level rise, this happened on December tenth. Mr. Englander talked them about the effects of climate change on sea level rise in their area. The bottom line was, he told all residents to begin to be prepared for three-foot of sea level rise. That sea level rise would practically inundate Ann Marie Island, as well as the other beaches along our coast. In addition, we have a elementary school, Ann Marie Elementary School on Ann Marie Island, which would be highly impacted by that also. Asthma, according to what I've read, is the number-one problem, number-one reason for absenteeism in schools. And we all know the traffic is heavy here in Manatee County, that Manatee County is growing, that the traffic will become heavier. And fossil fuel emissions greatly exacerbate the problem of asthma. So, this is another reason why we need to be concerned with fossil fuel emissions and do everything we can to provide clean energy to our schools. The Manatee Clean Energy Alliance realizes that return on investment is an important criterion in evaluating new schools and retrofitting schools going forward. However, given the catastrophic, the potentially catastrophic effect of climate change on our community, we feel it is vitally important that clean energy be a priority when planning and when there is a concern about the health and viability of our community. Climate change is an existential threat, and we all need to be concerned with it. It's something we need to deal with today, not tomorrow, we can't put it off. And I believe that the school board can be a leader in the state of Florida for other school boards, for our city and our county. So, I encourage you to always have climate change on the agenda when you're talking going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Rummage.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm Tim Rummage, I'm a resident of Bradenton and Manatee County. I'm also the professor of Environmental Studies at the Ringling College of Art and Design. And I, too, am here to speak about the value of solar power as a way of generating energy for our schools. Not only because of its efficiency, but because it has a very low pollution footprint. I mean, the carbon fuels that we're using now, as been mentioned by some of the other speakers, has a very high pollution impact, leads to climate change. I, too, had the opportunity to hear John Englander speak, and when he talked about the three feet of potential sea level rise in the area. I also want to point out that that is the minimum current estimate in this area for sea level rise by 2100. The more commonly one used is eight and a half feet. And so, as pointed out by a previous speaker, waiting is not in our benefit. As a faculty member, I know the main thing we need to do is to teach our students for their future. And our actions should reflect that same goal. We should be looking at alternative energies, green building design, ways to sequester carbon in our school systems, playgrounds, their landscape. It's all relatively doable. And again, what it does is it shows that we are mimicking the learning that we want our students to do. If we don't expect them to learn, why should we expect them to learn if we're not demonstrating that we, too, are using the latest information and the latest techniques and technologies? We want our students to have the great technology, we want them to use the latest textbooks. We should be using the latest and most rigorous information that we have available to us. We have students in this area, and I know I have them at the college level and the high school levels as well, who are suffering already from climate anxiety. And there's no reason to design schools anymore that would promote concern about whether or not the students are going to have a healthy, livable environment in the future. We should just be bottling for them how this gets done. So, again, I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to promote the use of solar energy and other forms of alternative energy, so that we can give the students the future that they deserve, as opposed to the one that we are currently leaving for them. Thank you very much.
Ms. Cowens, I think you're next. Let me double-check.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I'm Deanna Cowens, I'm a member of the Manatee Clean Energy Alliance, along with these other fine people. And first of all, I'd like to thank the board for the letter of support for school solar by HB 935 that you sent. We sent that out on Twitter, on the social media, to Sierra Club National, to show how our board is leading in this effort. And we very much appreciate it. And watching all the kids tonight, I do a climate change class at the Sarasota Boys and Girls Club. And most of my kids are from Lee Middle School. And to see these children here, to see the children that I interact with, who are very knowledgeable about climate change. Fortunately, most of them do not seem overly anxious yet. But they are aware of what's going on. And when I look at them and I look at my grandchildren, I think I have to do everything I can to help. And so, we appreciate your leadership in this area for this county, which is a large county, it'll have a lot of impact, not just here, but nationwide and worldwide. So, thank you.
Mr. Luther Wilkins? Okay. Mr. Meyer? Or Mayor, I'm not sure how to pronounce it. Mayor, I'm sorry. Just gonna meet you in person.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Saunders. Excuse me. My name is Hank Mayer, and though I'm a resident of the city of Sarasota and not Manatee County, I was employed by the School Board of Manatee County for twenty years of the forty-two years in my field of special education. Assigned to the exceptional student education department, eighteen of those years, I was an ESE specialist. And I retired early in June of 2017. But during my tenure, I was one of the seven thousand-plus employees whose information was compromised when an employee in Human Resources responded to a scam email sending out all our personal information. Dr. Green responded quickly by providing identity protection through AllClear these past three years. I received a notice from AllClear that my, through my email, that my coverage was to be terminated by the school district as of February 29th, and offered me a plan to pay personally. I contacted the school board immediately via email regarding the discontinuation of the coverage by the school district. I appreciate Mr. Kennedy for his immediate response to look into my concern. And then I received a follow-up email from Mr. Kennedy and from Mrs. Messenger attaching an email from the Human Resources Office that confirmed that the discontinuation of the $35,000 contract. The email further stated that the district covered the employees longer than most employees who experienced a breach in their employees' personal information. I did respond back to both Mr. Kennedy and Ms. Messenger that this was not acceptable. Both school board members stated that they would take up this matter with Superintendent Saunders. And again, I greatly appreciate their follow-up and continued communication as we pursue this concern. Currently, as I understand the situation, Superintendent Saunders agreed to look into the continuation, superintendent providing the identity security for the seven thousand-plus employees affected. As I further understand, AllClear, while it will provide individual coverage to the employees separately, but it does not renew the contract with the district to cover us as a group. I was told in emails from Mr. Kennedy and Mrs. Messenger that other security companies would be researched to secure a contract. And I appreciate this response to my concerns. I just came here tonight to emphasize my feeling that the district is responsible for the security breach and requires more than a three-year commitment of coverage. Many employees dealt with the ID theft and spent money and extended time, and also loss of work time to address those identity thefts. And I was kind of offended to initially receive the notification from AllClear and not from the district itself. What I'd like to request is that after the previous conversations with my financial and my tax advisors, that at least a five-year coverage be provided. I also believe, before considering discontinuation, the school district review the data, that AllClear and the next security agency regarding the number of incidents of attempted identity thefts that were intercepted and the number of identity thefts that occurred. Using this information, a determination to continue the contract, I'll do this real quick. To continue the contract, this information be considered. I feel the district owes me this much as a loyal and responsible employee for twenty years, having dealt with a lot of turbulent years here, and also all the other affected employees. And again, I really would like to thank Mr. Kennedy and Mrs. Messenger for addressing the returns of a retired employee. Thank you.
And we thank the superintendent because she is in process right now of trying to find us a vendor who will handle this. Thank you. That concludes public comments, so everybody who came out tonight, we appreciate it. And thank you for being here.
We're on to workshop item requests, and I believe Mr. Meyer brought up a workshop item earlier. And it was about a workshop Monday morning, was your request. And I guess I wanted to hear how the district would handle something like that, because it's not a week in advance, nor would people be- I don't know if people would even be able to host that at that short of time period, I don't know.
Well, I do think it's a good idea to have a workshop about the contract changes, because they are extensive, there have been suggestions. I will say that we don't have a final product right now. So, maybe what we can do, I know Mr. Dye has been working with the auditors and so forth on trying to get that completed, a red-line copy. So, maybe when he has that a little bit more put together and finalized, we could have a workshop going over the changes. Then the board would have an opportunity, from that document, if you wanted to add any additional language. Because remember, Mr. Dye's putting it together based on an audit, you know, recommendation and so forth, and from the audit committee. I don't know that all board members have really had an opportunity to interject any additional language that they may see is needed moving forward, such as solar or energy efficiency, et cetera. So, why don't we come up with some dates once Mr. Dye feels like he has a product ready to present? And then we can formulate a workshop dedicated to that before we send it out to the vendors to sign to move forward.
Mr. Meyer, how do you feel about that?
I find that comments disappointing. I find them disappointing because I believe that anyone who has the knowledge that Mark Clinch has in Osceola, of being the facilities director that has provided for a school, a high school, that now, by their energy system, is, you know, actually making money. Some is willing to come down here and, you know, with Dr. Pace's permission, to share knowledge about how we can do it. You know, it should not be minimized. If he's willing to come down here, if they're willing to provide that education for the community, you know, for us board members, you know, to learn about energy efficiency, I think we ought to grab it, hug them, and thank them. And not say, well, let's wait around sometime later when we may get the, you know, the paragraph straight or something that should have been done some time ago. They have a high school that has, you know, five hundred students, they got a solar panel, more than that. We've heard all this talk about we need to, you know, do something that is efficient in how we generate, you know, electricity, you know, for our schools. And I think that we have this opportunity. And one of the speakers said to be a leader in how we do this. I think it's important that every board member and every staff member, and hopefully everybody in this community, come to appreciate not only the desirability of it, but, you know, how we go about it. How do we get maximum usage of what's going on? And this gentleman will be able to do that. And I don't believe we have. I haven't heard it from any staff that really, you know, leads us through, this is what you gotta do. And the purpose of why I wanted to amend the contract was to really address, and I can, I want to hear it from staff right now. I'd like to hear it, you know, from our attorney right now. What specific criteria do we have right now contemplated, you know, for gauging if we're being effective in this proposed contract? Do we have anything?
The energy efficiency and renewable energy and solar and all of that kind of thing would be in your specifications. So, that would go into the RFP of what you want people to bid on. It really is not something that is in the contract, because it's a changing technology. because it's a changing technology.
Okay, I think that's the answer right there. There isn't anything right now.
Yeah, there's not anything in the contract.
Thank you very much. And it's the board that determines, you know, what should go in there. For the board to determine what's going in there, it needs to be educated. It's not afterwards, okay, we got it to contract, got it all together, please take a look at it. You know, we're gonna even set aside an hour to decide. It's for the board to get up to speed on what can be done, what should be done. And I think that Monday morning, you know, by having Mark Clinch come down here, answer questions, lay it out, how they've succeeded in doing what we haven't done, where we opened three schools without any provision for it. Now, that was a mistake. But a mistake should not be an excuse for letting it, repeating it again with respect to SUG. And we ought to learn about it. And we ought to say, this is what we need to do, and have it in there. And I think that the community would benefit. I think economically and money-wise, for us to take the time to educate ourselves and to, you know, tell, tell our staff. You know, this is really a good thing, and this is what we want in there. This is, and we want to have it verifiable. We want to have it in the contract. And we want to have the contract reviewed by outside experts to, you know, see that it will meet, you know, the standards that we expect from the contract. And it can be done. There are a couple of experts, one up in Roswell, one up in Louisville, can say, okay, if you approve this contract, and we're talking about spending millions of dollars, performance of this contract will provide you this renewable energy. It will provide this extra money for you. That can be done. And we should have it right in the contract.
I don't think we need to discuss necessarily the merits of this topic. My only question to the superintendent was, is it even legally permissible? Because it's less than a week of notification. And are there staff even available to have that meeting? Because it requires staff to run the cameras. It requires staff to turn on the microphones. It requires people to be here. It requires people to write the agenda. It requires a lot of different work. Those were my questions, not on the merits. I think there's some value in what you're saying. But what I want to know is, do we even have the support and the legal backing to be able to do it? That's really more of my question.
Okay.
Because what you're, normally when somebody requests a workshop, they say, I request a workshop on X, Y, and Z. Doesn't normally set, that person does not normally set the date.
Right.
And so this is a little different. And it's less than a week. And not only is it less than a week, it might be asking a lot of staff that may not even be able to be here because we don't know, because we, I mean, I didn't know. Maybe someone else knew, this is Sunshine. So I had no idea this was coming. So it requires a lot of people, that's all I'm asking. That was my only question there. It was not about discussing the merits. I just wanted to know if it was even feasible and whether we can even legally do it because it's less than a week.
We didn't get an answer.
Madam Chair?
I'm sorry, hold on. Reverend Golden?
Thank you. I apologize for being physically absent. But correct me if I'm wrong. When we last charged our council, it was to put specific language in two contracts or prepare that specific language for two contracts that had a sense of urgency about them so that we could start construction. I, maybe I'm wrong, but I thought that that was specifically why we did not take any action on those contracts at that time and why we asked the council to give us a time when he thought that this would be ready to move forward. Am I correct in hearing the council say, he has not completed his work?
Steve?
And he needs more time?
I can update, I can update the board on the status of the contract drafting. The suggestions from the CRI auditors have been inserted into the contract, the standard contract that the district has used for 20 years, I'm told. Which, that was a process of getting that language inserted in and reviewed by both sides to get it into the appropriate place in the contract. The draft contracts were sent-
I think we're both saying the same thing. We charged you with doing a specific task with respect to some specific contracts that we thought we were gonna be able to review Thursday. And now I'm hearing that we won't be able to review them Thursday, and a request has been made to review them next Monday. And I agree with the chair. That, why are we rushing? Is that because we have someone that wants to come and tell us how we ought to do it, who's an expert? Because the other thing that I remember is that when we talked about workshops and talked about a long-term inclusion of provisions in contracts that was designed to help us determine whether we wanted to move in any direction towards solar, that was a whole 'nother workshop all in and of itself. Those were considerations beyond the immediacy of what we were trying to address. So I guess the long and the short of what I'm wanting to say is, I hear all of this discussion and I hear all of this conversation, but I'm not quite so sure we're not mixing apples and oranges here. I heard the public comments that came tonight, many of which were geared toward a discussion about solar. I wish I could have been there in person to hear it. But the reality is, the discussion, the rationale that we used a few weeks ago to move our discussion out about these contracts wasn't about solar. It was about including provisions that would not leave us on the hook for changes based on the language that they wanted, that these contracts, these contract changes. Now, am I missing something here?
Yes, we're in.
What are we?
Okay.
So, so Madam Chair, I guess the long and the short of it, I just want to tell you, no, I'm not interested in a workshop on Monday just to give, because of the sense of urgency that seems to be developing around solar. We've discussed that and that's separate. And apart from the issues that gave rise to the modifications to the contracts to begin with. What we talked about modifying the contracts was because we wound up making changes that we wound up having to pay for because we did not say we would not pay for them in the original contract.
Okay, this seems like we're really getting into a really discussion. But I do want to point out, Reverend Golden, that I don't think Mr. Meyer's goal was to talk about solar. It sounded as if he was looking at other features that a building might offer in order to be more energy efficient. And he believes they should be in the contract. And I think Mr. Dye believes that should have been in the RFP. Am I understanding everything correctly?
Yes, the solar power would typically go into the specifications. Your engineer and your planning and your designers would specify that, which would be in your bid documents. Those are part of the contract. The contract refers to the plans and the specifications. So that's, that technical type feature of a building would not normally be a section of your standard contract. That's something that goes into your specifications of what you ask the contractors to bid on.
Right, and this time we're just using something that we've already used once. I want to ask, Dr. Hopes, are you there?
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right, so we've heard one person in favor of this workshop, one person not in favor of this workshop. How do you feel, Dr. Hopes?
I, I think legally we're required to make a seven-day notice. And I, I don't think I can be there Monday morning. It's the last couple of weeks of lunch session.
Right, okay.
Although I am in town Monday. But I think the issue is, I don't think we're ready to have a workshop on solar on Monday morning. And I, I don't, I don't think we can, I don't think we can call a public workshop with less than a notice.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy? I mean, I don't know, and more democratic-
I'll stick to the question of the workshop. I can be here Monday morning if we can legally call it. I would support that meeting. But I think, I think these kind of are two very related, but very separate issues that are being kind of molded together here.
I agree with you. I think Reverend Golden kind of made that point. Mr. Meyer, I know you have more to add. But I really am just trying to be as democratic and move forward as possible. I'm trying to see if there is a consensus that they even, we want this workshop. I'm hearing that there are people that want the workshop and they don't mind discussing this topic. But we don't even know if legally we can post it. So can I ask our attorney that question?
It's not an emergency item. So you technically need seven days because it's not an emergency action item.
Can I work with staff to create a meeting and he come in a different day? Or is it necessity that he comes only Monday morning?
Would a week from Monday morning work?
Can I, can we have a conversation? And everybody look at their calendars? I think this is kind of difficult to do this at this moment.
Well, I would talk with Mark and say, relate what we have here. And I'm inclined to think that he would do everything possible to accommodate the legal requirements and our requirements and do it, you know, a week from Monday.
Is it only Mondays? He's only good on Mondays? I don't understand the Monday thing. I'm just trying to understa, I'm just trying to understand.
Okay, I don't fully understand it. But this guy has a very demanding full-time job. And I think the idea is, you know, he would get up at, you know, 4:30 or whatever to come down here to be at 9 o'clock on a Monday. And that would work for him.
What about a Friday afternoon? He just gets a hotel room on the beach?
I will ask him about that. I'm very serious about, we're talking about alternate, you know, times and places. I do think it's the best place to have it here.
I don't think I heard anybody say they didn't agree with it. It's just, I think the timeframe is very tight. And I think that there are two different things going on here. We're negotiating a contract, but it sounds like what you're asking for is something that might go in an RFP and not in a contract. I would really like to have a conversation with him about that. But I think we're really getting into the workshop topic now. So what I really, only thing I need to understand right now is, are you comfortable moving this to a different date? It sounds as if you think a Monday morning is the best thing.
I am comfortable moving it to another date. One of the ramifications is, we heard our council say that, well, it's been reviewed by CRI. Did I understand correctly?
Correct.
Okay, now, CRI did not review it, you know, for energy efficiency, did it?
Correct.
Okay? And what we need to have is a proposal or a proposed contract, you know, that has certain specifications by design and the, a contract of construction that has specifications that meets our requirements, you know, for energy efficiency. And to have those contracts reviewed, you know, by, you know, someone who knows how to do that. And I can give a couple of people right now.
I think that would be a great conversation to have at that workshop.
Yes, absolutely. And, and then you get this. And it's then, you know, that it's put together, you know, by council and for, and reviewed. And if we have a positive feedback from those who've reviewed it, that this would meet our requirements of energy efficiency, then it's, you know, then it comes before the board that this outfit, whoever it is, and this architect's plans, they're going to be approved. It's the board that should be determining what criteria are in that contract. The people elect us. And I'm saying, us, you know, need to be educated as to what is best, you know, for the community, not have something, you know, fall out of the air and say you like it or not. And that's, that's the purpose of having someone who is respected, experienced, been through it, to, you know, give us guidance to most efficiently and correctly address this desire that's been expressed by the community in a design contract and a contract for implementing that design.
I think this can all be discussed at the workshop. How about we make a workshop that discusses those contract items you'd like to, and have this expert come in to talk about the different features that we should add into an RFP or a contract? And if he has examples of it being in a contract or being in an RFP, he can bring those at that time and we can have that conversation. Are you okay with that?
I'm okay in doing it a week, a week from Monday. And I, you say, well, what's the hurry?
I'm not, you don't have to sell me on it. I agree with you. You're not, it's not, you're, we're good, okay? I don't, I don't want to set a hard date because I don't think that's fair to staff. But we will work on a date. And if it needs to be on Monday, we will do it on Monday. I prefer the ninth. I agree with you because we're gonna have a meeting on the 10th. And that might be the day we have contracts, I don't know. And I want to get the contracts going so that they can work and get done over the summer, whatever can get done over the summer because that's cheaper for us to do that if we can. So I would like to do that. But I don't want to do it at risk of doing something that could hinder the future of the buildings. I, we will find a date, I promise. Okay? Are we good? Are there any other workshop requests?
Madam Chair, can I?
Yes.
I just would like a little clarification.
Sure.
The staff was directed to work with legal based on the CRI recommendations for the changes of the contract.
Yes.
That is what they have been doing.
Yes.
The board did not direct anything other than that. We have no problem putting anything in the contract that the board deems is necessary. We, but we do need clear guidance from the collective unit, which I do think a workshop is the best way. Because until we get a final decision of what it looks like or what it should be, it, we really can't give it to a vendor to sign to bring before the board. So I am in agreeance. I don't know that they should do any more work. Maybe just bring what they have. The board then can give input. And then we can make any changes that are deemed necessary. Because they've just been working off the directive of putting the CRI changes in the contract.
I personally don't think they need to stop working on those changes. Those changes are gonna have to happen no matter what. I think this is another item.
So they can have the red line ready and submitted before the workshop so everybody sees it in advance. And then you can input any additional.
So what I'm hearing is, we will have a workshop that will discuss the construction contract. It will also discuss additional building features. I don't know how to title this any better way. Additional building features for-
Are energy efficient?
Energy efficiency. And then-
From there, we should be able to draft a final contract.
And I would look for examples of how that was done, either in a contract or an RFP, because I don't know which way is really the better way to do that one. And from there, you'd either have guidance on whether we're gonna move forward with the energy efficiency things or not. But at least then, the, other rest of the contract and the recommendations would have, will be presented to us. Is that, is that an understanding from everybody here? Everybody good? Okay. You got more? Are you okay?
I guess what bothers me is kind of the attitude that it is not the board who determines what should go into that contract. It's the board that's elected by the people that determines what is most important to be in that contract. And one of the idea of having, you know, Mark Clinch come down here is to say, well, these are the most important things, you know, to be in that contract, to serve your constituency. And listen to them, explain them, justify them.
I think it is our internal auditor and our attorney and us as a board that has said, these are the things that were important based on the recommendations that we have gotten. That was all driven by us. All of those changes were driven by us. So I think that the district is only being responsive.
Okay. What I'm, what I'm getting at is, CRI did not, as we've just heard, do anything with respect to review as to meeting any kind of efficiency standards.
They weren't asked to by the board.
That's right. And the board should. What?
You just said it is board-driven.
And the board should drive to have energy efficiency.
I don't think anybody's arguing with you.
Okay, well, they don't have, they haven't done anything for that.
It sounds like you've got an expert that can come and talk to us about it.
That's right. We'll have him come.
Fabulous. Okay, let's move on. Legal update, I think you kind of gave it. You got anything else?
Well, I needed, I kind of got cut off before I finished my comment.
I apologize.
It wasn't you.
I still apologize.
And I, I accept it. The, okay, the contract was, I wanted to make sure the board knew that I immediately drafted the changes to the contract after the last meeting. There was no delay in that. The, so that went, had to go back and forth a couple of times with CRI to get the language where everybody felt it was in the right places. The Construction Management Department next released the new draft contract to some of the contractors that they work with. That resulted in at least one meeting that just recently happened, a fairly lengthy three-hour meeting where the contractor was objecting to a lot of this language. They've been asked to send a red line that specifically shows what they're objecting to, and that has not been received yet. So that's the status of the contract. I just sent everybody, all the board, the most current version of the contract with the red line changes in it. So you, you should have that in your email. So that's, that's all on the contract, in the construction contract update. I've got a, an update on litigation report on Lincoln Memorial, and that'll be bifurcated. The General Counsel also has a separate update on, on that as well. If, if you recall, after the charter was terminated, LMA appealed the termination to DOA, which was the typical procedure by statute of, of appealing that termination. As you also know, I'm sure that they lost that appeal. The next thing that happened, just remind everybody, is they then filed an appeal of the DOA decision with the First DCA, which is also the procedure if you lose the DOA hearing. So that, that got filed as well. After that, the LMA folks decided that they did not want to appeal the, get the DOA decision to the First DCA. And instead, they wanted to try to go back to DOA and ask for a rehearing. But it already had been filed with the First DCA. They had jurisdiction at that point. So they, they did a motion to relinquish jurisdiction with the First DCA, asking them to give it up and let it go back to DOA. And the First DCA will not agree to do that. So they will not relinquish their jurisdiction of the case. So the, so the appeal that was filed by LMA will now proceed in the First DCA. They did not, the First DCA did not give an opinion on that. They just said denied. And, and General Counsel Titlebaum has a, has another update on LMA.
Members of the board, Superintendent. Taxpayer money that was spent on defending Lincoln Memorial Academy appeal was awarded to the school board in its entirety in a twenty-nine-page memorandum decision dated February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty by DOA Chief Judge Robert Cohn. The judge awarded the school board a total of two-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-seventy-eight dollars and eighty-two cents, consisting of attorney's fees, costs, and services. The legal fees and, the legal fees and costs that were charged to the school board by the attorneys were deemed by an expert as reasonable and accepted by the court. And the retention of services by CRI and Silent were substantiated. For the court, in their opinion, stated that CRI's forensic investigation and report served as undisputable evidence of LMA's egregious financial mismanagement and how this financial mismanagement posed an immediate danger to the student health, safety, and welfare of LMA students, the very basis upon which the termination was, was based by our board. The pivotal role of CRI services played in the underlying case is undisputed, as per the judge. In addition, the judge found that Silent also discovered that agents of LMA deleted hundreds of files during the penancy of the action after being served with written discovery by the school board and failed to hand over tablets, phones, and other emails in a timely fashion. And the judge wrote that throughout the proceedings, the school board fully cooperated with Lincoln Memorial Academy by making their witnesses available for deposition and by providing all documents in its possession for LMA to better prepare its case for the hearing. However, the school board enacting in good faith, the judge said was a one-way street. LMA missed discovery deadlines, failed or refused to comply with orders to compel, and evoked its Fifth Amendment right not to testify about many of the significant issues confronting the charter school in the underlying case. The judge most importantly stated that at every turn in the road, SB's legal team, which is us, was compelled to work harder, expend more hours, and often repeat reasonable discovery requests due to LMA's stubborn refusal to comply. When some documents appeared for the very first time at the hearing in response to discovery requests of a month prior, the already established pattern of obfuscation was brought home for the final time. For members of our board, the judge reserved decision to, to consider a further award of attorney's fees and costs if we are successful in the next appeal. And also a demand letter for the two-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-eighty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents will be sent to LMA's governing board. Thank you.
Instructional update.
What was the last thing that he said?
A, um.
What now?
A demand letter is being sent.
To whom?
Lincoln Memorial Academy's governing board, Reverend Golden.
Okay, okay. The governing board that was there during this time. Now, are they personally liable?
Reverend Golden, that is to be seen. And at this point in time, based upon this decision that was rendered, it was to the corporation of LMA, Lincoln Memorial Academy Incorporated. But again, whether they're going to be held ultra virus is to be determined. And I can't comment any further. I don't, I can't tell you this.
Do we know whether or not they had director's liability insurance?
Base of, may I respond?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Based upon what the insurance premiums that in the, the district has received, I have, I have no indication that they obtained such insurance.
Mr. Kennedy.
All right, that's all for now.
I guess I have a question and I have an editorial comment. This, this case is now proceeding to the Court of Appeals. So I'm not quite sure why we're discussing period because it's still, it's still in motion. And then Mitch or Mr. Titlebaum, if they were to prevail in the Court of Appeals, does this three-hundred-thousand-dollar judgment against the corporation or the individuals go away if they prevail at the DCA?
It would have to be determined by the court at that time.
Like all legal cases, I would just ask that we let them play out in the justice system. And this one is still playing out. So it's just a personal preference of mine, but I'm only one of five, so.
Okay, instructional update.
Madam Chair, thank you. We are in the midst of our recruitment efforts. As a matter of fact, as we speak, there is a recruitment team at the University of South Carolina, hopefully securing or reviewing individuals who have qualifications and competence to meet all the needs of our students within Manatee County. Additionally, we will visit Gulf Coast campus at the end of the week so that we will continue our efforts throughout the next couple of months. In an effort to make certain that we hire the best and brightest, we have conducted the first of three sessions to focus on hiring practices. TNTP, we have contracted with them to deliver three sessions with our principals as well as district administrators so that we can hire the best, not only in the instructional side, but across operations, any vacancies that currently exist or will exist as we work towards the opening of our next school year. So with that in mind, March fourth is the next session, and that will be a full day of professional learning for our principals and district administrators. We will entertain a guest, a special guest. Dr. Gloria Ladson-Billings will be with us that day as well as a representative from Curriculum Associates who will present the topic of opportunity myth as well as the session for hiring, recruitment, and retention because it all is connected. So moving forward, I'd also like to encourage you to wear your red tomorrow as Pat Barber has indicated earlier in the day. As we support our public schools, we're red for public ed. That is tomorrow, Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, to demonstrate our support of our faculties, staffs, and all educators throughout the district. Thank you.
Operations update.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have two items tonight. The first one is, it wasn't in the news, but we're just going to make a note of it here tonight, that our House Bill seven-twenty-five, which is our ASN to allow Manatee Technical College and the other technical colleges in the state, passed the floor vote on the House last week, which is a big deal. If you remember, it had to go through three committees and then be heard on the House. And it was actually passed unanimously, a hundred and seventeen yays and zero, a hundred and seventeen yeses and zero nays. So that's a big deal to have it. We still have to go through the Senate side, but at least half of it is moving forward right now. So I want to thank Dr. Hopes. He has gone to testify at all, all the committee hearings also and get that moving. The second thing, in playing on what Ms. Yost had talked about as far as the recruitment, tonight I want to show a short, two-minute video. You have seen videos before for our teachers, our bus drivers, our food service workers. And tonight, we want to show, highlight our sub. We have a sub-video that the Manatee Schools Television created for us, and it's a spotlighting one of our subs, who is substitute teachers at Hale Middle School. So if we could show that, it's very high quality.
I wonder if it has to do with the call-in.
Probably.
Nick, do we have so, uh, sound in the back?
We can send it out.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, I bet it has to do.
I bet it's because of the call-in.
Oh, the call-in's blocking it. Okay, well, the call-in's blocking it, but it is a
A good video.
It's a great video, and it is on our homepage. So it's on the manateeschools.net homepage. And if you scroll down, you'll click the substitute link, and it's actually right there. We've streamlined the process to be a substitute here in Manatee County also. So the video is located on our website as well.
Thank you. Superintendent remarks.
Well, we have a one, a lot of wonderful athletes in our district. So let me tell you about some competitions going on. Lakewood Ranch Boys Soccer Team has advanced to the state semifinal. They will play Saturday, Saturday at Orlando Boone at five. If they win, they play for the state championship on the twenty-ninth in Deland. So they're in the running. They're, they're just one win away from being at the state game. So let's cheer them on. And it is the power of the women. Southeast High School and Braid River High School Girls Basketball Teams have made it to the Final Four. And unfortunately, we will not be able to attend Thursday, their first game, because we will be in a workshop. But I know they're going to win and move forward to the state championship, which will be held on Saturday. And we will be there cheering them on Saturday. So let, let's all rally behind and hope we bring home some state championships this week. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go down the line. Dr. Hopes, are you still there?
I am.
Do you have any comments?
I'm actually around the corner, but I will forego my comments and I'll wave my time to Mr. Kennedy.
I'm going to need it. Thank you.
Okay. Reverend Golden.
I'm not around the corner, but I'm going to wave my time and let, uh, Mr. Kennedy, oh, no, wait. I'll let, uh, Mr. Minor take my part.
Okay, well, Mr. Minor, you got double tie. What would you like to say?
Thank you, Reverend Golden. Thank you very much. I guess the point that I haven't communicated very well is that ultimately, the people looked at this school board or deciding what's going to be in the contracts. And it would appear, at least preliminarily, that on Thursday, we were, you know, approving a contract that we hadn't even seen, you know, with a
Dr. Hopes.
Has left the conference.
With a contractor, you know, for building it and also, you know, for designing it that we hadn't seen either. And it just rankled me that it's nice to have some proposed, you know, contracts. But I think that the community and the board members, you know, should have sufficient time to really look at them, understand them, and these are very complex things. We weren't provided that. The public wasn't provided that. And that's most of fault of the board, except the board is responsible for all of that. One of the things that I remember Mark telling me, the two important things are, you know, in each contract, have it very explicit about the services and design, about the energy use intensity. I don't think there's anything in there. We can talk about it being audited, you know, the contracts, but they've never been audited either. And that should be in it before this board, you know, approves anything. Same thing with respect to, you know, hiring the contractor and, and the, the contracts implementing the design. We should be able to, you know, have that checked out. Does that, is that really, you know, consistent? And it can be. There's a lot of things that should be done before, you know, we start paying money, you know, to a contractor, and we're talking about a lot and a lot of money to a designer. I guess that's the only reason for rush, that's the only reason for, you know, having a workshop sometime soon, maybe a week from Monday. But I think that, you know, these two things that were told to me by Mark about you want to have energy use and intensity reasonable requirement in both of the contracts. The same thing is about what you have in your contract about the air tightness, what goes on. And there, there are standards for that. He says nothing less than a point-two-five CFSM square foot or less. Is that in the contract? I don't think Mr. Die can tell us that.
I can tell you it's not in the contract.
It's not in the contract.
That might be in the specs, but.
Well, it's, we can spec everything we want, but if we don't have it in there, that that's a requirement of what we're going to be paying money for in both, you know, for the contractor and for the designer, then we shouldn't approve it. And that the designs for construction, the designs, you know, should be reviewed by an independent construction architect, engineer for, for approval and audit before we do it. I mean, I'm not qualified to say, okay, here's all these pages. It meets those standards. And there are people who do it. Mr. Wagner and I had a little talk about, who does this? Well, I found two people who do. One in Roswell, one up in Louisville. Here's the stuff. Does it meet these standards? We owe it to the people of this community to have that done before we say we're going to pay those people money. And I, I think that there's a lot more, but basically, those things, you know, should be in any contract before this board approves, or we talk about, we have a contractor or, for building it, we have a contractor to design. Thank you very much.
Vice Chair Kennedy.
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you to Heather. I, I know you'll be here still on Thursday, but you have worn many hats and had many bosses. And it's been a pleasure to get to know you and work with you, and, and we will miss you around here for sure. here for sure. So a couple other minor items, and then I have a little bit longer one, but it's related to Black History Month, and I, but let me do the Altogether Now Conference first. Board members, if you remember last, about this time last year, we had a really great presentation from our Student Services Team that I met at the Altogether Now Conference last year. And the Altogether Now Conference is put on by Equality Florida, and it centers on, you know, having, school districts having better outcomes, and providing a better environment for LGBT students. And so that conference this year was in St. Pete, at the USF St. Pete campus, over the past two days, and I'm proud to say the Manatee County again had a, had a full table there. And this morning, at the conference, we heard from three students, and that was, as always with our public comment, it's always the most powerful to hear from the kids. And so that was, that was very, you know, for an older generation, it's, there's always so much to learn from our students, and this morning was no exception. So the, and I know this is not my role, but I hope as a district, we can continue to move forward with training around those issues, and the board will keep those issues in focus as well. Okay, the superintendent has already mentioned the success of our sports teams, and I want to give Joe Von credit. Joe Von Carter is a staff member at Basha, and he is also on the coaching staff at Braden River High School Girls Team. And a couple of games ago, I was talking to Mr. Carter on the court after the game, and he asked me if the board would be doing anything for Black History Month, and I said not formally, at least not that I'm aware of. And he said, well, G.D. Rogers is my great-grandfather. And I said, well, I'm gonna, I would like to, I will talk about that at the meeting. And so what I did is, I started looking around for information, and what I kept coming back to was an article by Marib Favorite, who was kind of our local historian for the Bradenton Times, and it's just a really interesting story of G.D. Rogers, and then there's another one about Louise Rogers Johnson, but I just wanted to do G.D. Rogers, because he's the great-grandfather. So if you'll indulge me, I just want to share this real quick, and I do this with Marib's permission, and I've kind of cut it down for time a little bit too, but Garfield DeVoe Rogers was a chipper and a dipper from Georgia. He chipped and dipped turpentine and worked his way down to Florida selling sandwiches on the train. He simultaneously started a family and several businesses along Ninth Street in Bradenton, the heart of a bustling black community. But Rogers wanted more than a success. He wanted to instill in the lives of his children, and the children of others, a chance to become something great. So he purchased a plot of land, and Lincoln Academy was created. Originally opened in 1930, Lincoln was the first school for African-Americans in the county. It was located in Bradenton on Second Street and 10th Avenue West, which is right over here, catty corner from the Enterprise Rent-A-Car, if you know where that is. When it first opened, it only went to eighth grade. By 1931, the school had expanded to 12th grade. This is a quote from Ken Rogers, who is his son, in an interview that he gave with the Manatee Historical Society, quote, "I remember a fairly peaceful, fairly serene existence during all of that period. There was segregation, to be sure, but it never crossed my mind that there was ever anything else in this world. So I do remember with a great deal of fondness my teachers and that sort of thing," end quote. Unlike white schools that receive government funding, Lincoln functioned through an exchange program. Bradenton High School would donate old books and football uniforms to the students. Children and parents would have to hold fundraisers in order to buy equipment. The children would also entertain people. The Kiwanis Club of Bradenton would allow them to use their auditorium to sing for the tourists, then the children would take up a collection for their school after the performance. This is Ken Rogers, again, quote, "Looking back on it, you know, it sounds really bad, but I don't know, it was great. It was just really great. It's just like Eisenhower says, 'I didn't know I was poor until I got real old,'" end quote. Though the school was poor, G.D. Rogers was a successful man. He ran a tailoring shop, opened a funeral home, which at the time was a very profitable business, sold real estate, and organized the Central Life Insurance Company. But G.D. Rogers stood up for what he believed in. During the 1940s, teachers all over the nation began to sue school boards for equalization of salaries. Black teachers' wages were far less than those of whites, and when Mrs. Francis H. Stevens locally sued the Manatee County School Board, G.D. Rogers was instrumental in getting Thurgood Marshall, then chief counsel for the NAACP, involved in the dispute. When school boards around the state lashed out, firing any black teachers who showed any hint of support of the cause, Garfield accepted them with open arms, Garfield being G.D. Rogers, reminder. As, I'll skip that part. Francis Stevens was represented by an African-American attorney, S.D. McGill, from Jacksonville, while an all-white team of attorneys, including W.J. Daniels and Val McKean of Bradenton, represented the Manatee County School Board. In a federal court ruled in favor of Francis in March of 1945, the school teacher, who had funded her own lawsuit, not only won, but completely reformed the rating system that had been, that had been in use for years, Judge William J. Barker submitted a new nondiscriminatory salary scale for teachers. Under the new system, a teacher's ability, educational attainment, cultural background, and effectiveness in teaching would be considered for salary compensation and be determined by a rating committee made up of the superintendent and other board members. Lincoln and downtown Bradenton eventually closed, and no other school replaced it, but it merged with Memorial High School in 1948 and became Lincoln Memorial High School located in Palmetto. G.D. Rogers' progression was just the start of a 30-year battle for civil rights. Today, we remember him and Francis Stevens as two of the most inspiring African-Americans in Manatee County history. So I thought that was really fascinating, that's why I took the time to want to share it tonight. And, you know, not Louise R. Johnson, Barbara Harvey are prominent African-Americans in our namesakes, namesakes of schools. And really, I was going to turn to him if he was sitting here, but really Reverend Golden is a bit of African-American history, because as you may remember, Reverend Golden is the first black man to be elected to a countywide office in Manatee County history. So our current member, Reverend Golden, is a, you know, owns a piece of Black History Month for...
Graduate of University of Florida, that's cool, too.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Okay, wow, amazing. So thank you for that. So, board members, I appreciate the time.
You used it wisely.
But, thank you, and that's all I have for tonight. Thanks, Gina.
Okay, I'd just like to recognize that Dr. Hope's made it here, and I have nothing else to add, so with no objection, I will adjourn the meeting at 7:40.
Nice job. Perfect.
You came in at the...